All right, I'd like to call to order the May 13th, 2024, Mallick Terrace Planning Commission Meeting to order. Would you please take the roll?
Chair Batista.
Here.
Vice Chair Harrison.
Here.
Commissioner Stenson.
Commissioner Morgan.
Here.
Commissioner Thompson is currently absent. Commissioner Betcher is an excused absence for tonight. Commissioner Landis will not be able to attend for tonight.
Would anybody like to make a motion for an excused absence for Commissioner Landis?
Motion to excuse Commissioner Landis.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Commissioner Landis has an excused absence for this evening. Item number three, approval of the April 22nd, 2024 meeting minutes. Does anybody have any changes or corrections to those? I am not hearing Arseni, so we'll go ahead and declare those accepted as presented. Item number four, public comment. Let the record show, there is no public in here in person tonight. Do we have anybody who has requested to make public comment online?
No one has requested to make comment online.
All right, so we'll go ahead and move on to item number five, comprehensive plan update.
All right. Good evening, Chair Batista, Vice Chair Harrison, members of the Planning Commission, Jonathan Morales, Senior Planner at the City of Mallick Terrace. And today, we are here for another briefing on the Vision 2044 Conference Plan Update. We have a light agenda today on this. And so, the main focus of this meeting will be to provide an overview of the project, schedule, updates on engagement. Then we'll be introducing the utilities and capital facilities element goals, draft goals and purpose, and distributing the transportation element policy matrix, which I believe you've sort of received the electronic version last Friday. Let's see. So in terms of the schedule, I've presented this slide to you before, just some minor, a minor update on the draft EIS timeline. Previously, we were targeting June 2024. However, due to some, more time needed with the analysis because of the significant changes to the alternatives, we're targeting July 2024. We've been informed by the consulting group that this will not impact the timing of the overall draft plan timeline, so all that should remain as presented previously. And similarly, the final EIS is targeted, still coinciding with the full adoption of the comp plan. So in terms of overall schedule, we are discussing today capital facilities and utilities, sorry, introducing, and then distributing transportation. We're still targeting end of August for having Planning Commission recommendation forward at the City Council, and then targeted adoption by October 2024. So in terms of community engagement, just to recap, so our last meeting with the Comprehensive Plan Advisor Group will be on June 26. We do have a meeting on June 5, so there's two meetings in June, and these will cover sort of the process for reviewing the draft plan and what that public review process looks like as it goes forward to Planning Commission and then Council for adoption. And then again, just highlighting that we do have the online open house, which is open and will remain open as we continue to receive comments to those open houses. And so, we have two sort of modules. We have a fall 2023 open house module, and then spring 2024 open house. Spring 2024 engagement, so again, collecting feedback on the revised vision statement and elements in progress. And then we have a targeted engagement series in coordination with the Vida Agency that we selected to work with us on sort of more targeted engagement. So one of the major updates here is that we have selected a date for a sub area workshop. This will be focused on the Melody Hill and Cascade View sub areas. So this has been identified for June 11, starting at 5:30 PM until 8:15, give or take, at the Brighton School. So we reached out to the Brighton School and some other schools, including the Evan School District. We heard back from Brighton School, and they were gracious to provide space in their gymnasium to host this event. So the way we are organizing this is that it'll be a single meeting with two distinct sort of groups. So we have businesses and employers, and that's the first hour of the meeting, so first hour and 15 minutes. And then we have another opportunity for residents and general public. There will be an introduction, a sort of short presentation at the beginning, so it's advised that people show up at the 5:30 PM start, but of course, you can come and go as you please. So just real quick, we did try to reach out to Primera, and they were not able to provide us a space in the Melody Hill neighborhood. And due to timing and trying to figure out the best way to approach these events, this was the option that we came up with and that we were able to organize. Initially, we were thinking about having two dates, so that has changed as of recent. This is all coming from conversation today with our consultant group. And also, we had a tour of the Brighton School this morning. One of the dates that we chose as a second alternative did not work for Brighton School, it turns out, because they have prior commitments. So it was hard to nail down a second date. So this is the option that we're proposing. So we are in the process of preparing postcards and flyers, so that will go out pretty shortly to neighborhoods, to the sub area neighborhoods. So those will be targeted mailings to those neighborhoods, and then through the social media effort, it'll get broadcast citywide. So let's see. Actually, I have one more slide on engagement. So the Vida Agency has been engaging local businesses through interlop surveys. I believe that was last week. We're waiting for a recap of how those went and to see what's sort of the hot topics were. So we'll have more information by the next meeting on that process. There's a pop-up being organized at the food bank, I believe, for next Tuesday. So we'll be printing posters for that event, and it'll be sort of a pop-up, so think like five-minute questions and really quick way to engage folks. And then continue to plan to attend community events, so we have the summer events. In terms of small group workshops, we heard back from Mallick Terrace High School Organizing Committee that's sort of working with the Vida Agency to set up a workshop with the students. So I believe that's being planned for May 31st, which is a Friday, and that is from 12:45 to 1:30. We did hear back from those organizers and got the impression that the less adults in the room, the better. So I think we need to be mindful about how many people show up and attend. So the Vida Agency will be leading that event and facilitating. We were not aware about the date, so we do have a conflict internally because we will be having a full day comp plan workshop with all department heads on that date as well. So we need to figure out the timing of that and whether it makes sense to propose another date for that workshop or, yeah. For the Latinas and Mallick Terrace group, that's a workshop being planned for May 16, and that'll be at the Vida Agency offices, I believe, which is located in Edmonds. And then, we are planning engagement with faith-based organizations. So right now, we're in talks with the mosque to plan something. So it'll be sort of like a briefing, introduction to the comp plan process, sort of like a comp plan 101, and then opportunity to facilitate questions and hear about their interests and how they would like to get involved. We're also planning other engagement with other faith-based groups in town, and then also development and property management community. So this is my last slide on engagement. Are there any questions here?
Yeah, I have a couple. In terms of trying to set up, you know, like a second workshop and reaching out to the school district, in cases like that, where you're wanting to utilize the high school for a meeting that's open to the public, is that, was that outreach to the high school or does it have to go directly to the district itself?
It has to go through the district.
Through the district?
So yeah, through their facilities person.
Okay. And was it just a no thank you or no reply?
It was just the timing of receiving the reply. We did receive a reply, but at that point, we already moved forward with the Brighton School.
Okay. And then, I'm assuming the, trying to, you know, actually meet with the students, that's being coordinated more through the high school itself?
Yes, so that's being coordinated through the high school and some of their clubs that they have, so I believe the Latino Student Union, Black Student Union, and another group.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is it the school that's deciding on which groups to include, or is it actually open for everyone?
You know, I'm not sure entirely if it's been broadcast like throughout this student body.
Okay.
Or it's sort of amongst the existing clubs that exist there.
It seems like a waste if it's just being restricted to people who are involved in a select handful of clubs, because I can guarantee you that people who aren't in those clubs have no idea what those clubs are doing.
Yeah.
And are probably not aware of the opportunity.
Yeah. I believe there, from what I understand, students that participate in those clubs have been sort of networking with their peers, so sort of spreading the word.
Okay. Just, I mean, it's, it seems like a shame if it is, you know, ends up being low turnout because, you know, because of that, so this is, you know.
Yeah.
This is new for us trying to, you know, trying to reach out to especially youth groups who, some can be extra motivated and engaged, but the majority, kids are kids and...
What I would say to that too, though, is that I think for this age group, having sort of like a smaller event could probably foster more discussion and comfortability and like voicing their concerns and so...
Well, I know that, you know, they have different, you know, classes, especially in like, you know, business and economics, you know, what this comp plan sort of facilitates, you know, has directly ramifications for businesses and in-town economics and, you know.
Yeah.
It would be a great opportunity, you know, if those groups or, you know, classes as well wanted to attend, you know, I don't, you know, you said it was like 1:30, 12:30 to 1:30?
12:45 to 1:30.
12:45 to 1:30.
So it's right after school lets out.
Oh, is that like a half-day for them?
I believe so.
Okay. Trust me, I know the bell schedule, I can hear it. They, well, yeah, they usually, usually they go till like 1:50 or 2:00. That must be a short day for them. Okay.
And so, I know, I understand that there's a couple of people that are interested in What I would say to that is, they've requested that if people are attending, that there's a role, a role that's being played, so whether it's like a co-facilitator, note taker, or something of that nature.
Okay.
But I don't know if they want observers in the room, based on what I've heard, so. I can get more clarity on that.
Not that it should make a difference in terms of what their opinion is, but, you know, if it helps, let them know there's at least one Planning Commissioner who is an alum of the school, who is very interested to make sure, you know, to see, you know, the opinions of the students there. And I think we'd be missing an opportunity to just restrict this to students now. I could see maybe students aren't comfortable maybe airing their opinions in front of their teachers, but this is one of the larger employers in the city. And so, there's a lot of adults who commute there for work, so be interested to hear what their comments are, just like we would be interested to hear like other major employers like Primera and whatnot. So it's very rare where we have any location in the city that has that many people actually working.
Right. That's a fair point. Any other questions? So at the next meeting, we'll probably have a more concrete understanding of what the sub area workshop's going to look like and what the plan is, so we'll bring that to you as we continue to organize the content and materials. So today, we're going to be introducing the utilities and capital facilities element. So the purpose of the utilities element, it's that it provides information and policies regarding coordination on facilities that are managed by services, service providers other than the city. So some of the third-party utilities that we are, that are considered for electricity, it's the Snohomish County PUD, Public Utility District, natural gas, Puget Sound Energy. There's various telecommunications providers in town. And then for waste management, that's trash and recycled waste management. So the three proposed drafts that we've identified, so goal one is work with third-party service providers to ensure adequate services and technologies are provided to meet the community's needs. Goal two, ensure utility uses and infrastructure are compatible with land uses and the surrounding environment. And goal three, coordinate with third-party service providers on timing and availability of services and projects. In terms of capital facilities, the purpose of this element is to provide information and policies regarding the physical facilities and services that are run by the city to meet long-term public needs. So examples of these services are water service, sanitary sewer, stormwater, parks and recreation facilities. Again, that's the focus of the Recreation Parks and Open Space element. Transportation services, civic spaces, police and public safety. And then we do have coordination with other local jurisdictions, such as through Snow Isle Libraries for the library facilities, and South County Fire for fire and emergency medical services. And proposed draft goals here, so we have five goals. Goal one is to provide adequate public facilities for public needs. Goal two, ensure efficient and cost-effective capital facilities and systems. Goal three, ensure consistency with land use environment elements. Goal four, maintain a plan for future capital improvements with sound fiscal management. And goal five, plan for and provide effective emergency management and health and public safety services and facilities. So any questions there?
I have one other one. What about the local hospital district?
Can you say that again?
What about the local hospital district? So like Stevens Hospital or Swedish?
Oh.
Seemed like they would kind of fit into that matrix.
Yeah, I know we identify those in, I believe in the policy language.
Okay.
Yeah, but not necessarily within the draft goal statements. And so, for this, these two elements in particular, we are doing a pretty in-depth coordination with our Public Works Department. So for the policy concepts that CPAG reviewed, they also went through a review process with Public Works Director and City Engineer. And so, we'll do the same for the policy draft language that will be proposed to you for review. Those will be vetted and reviewed by Public Works staff as well. So the next item is distribution of the transportation element goals and policy matrix. So this was previously sent via email on Friday, and I think Shannon's going to distribute the physical copies. And Shannon will also distribute the policy matrices again via email in case you didn't So in terms of next steps, so we ask that you review and provide comments by May 20th at 4:00 PM, so that's Monday, May 20th, and you'll just email your comments to shannon@sallson@mltwa.gov. And if you can please abstract changes for any comments and proposed text changes to the policy language. And then we'll be discussing the comments at the May 28 meeting. So today, we introduced the utilities and capital facilities element and distributed transportation element goals and policies. The next meeting will discuss the transportation element goals and policies and distribute the utilities and capital facilities element goals and policy matrices. On June 10th, we'll discuss those review comments on the utilities and capital facilities element. And then June 24th, we're proposing a break before we dive into the full draft plan review. So June 24th, there will be no presentation on the comp plan, sort of give you time to decompress and before we really dive deep into the draft plan. So that full draft plan review will start on July 8. So the goal is that we will have a couple meetings, maybe three or four, to go through the plan and provide your recommendations to council by end of August. And then the council will start their process in early September. Any questions? That's all I have today.
The June 24th break, that's just going to be a break from comp plan stuff, but we're still having a meeting?
Yes, and at this time, I'm not aware of there's any agenda item other than a comp plan. So that may just be canceled.
Anybody have any questions? All right, not hearing or seeing any. Let's finish writing this down real quick. Okay. I guess that's all we have for that agenda item then. So we've got item number six, Director's Report.
The director is in the building, and I'm not prepared to provide you a report today.
Okay. Do you happen to know if she had something that she wanted to discuss?
I'm not sure.
If she's deep into thought on something else, I don't want to bug her, but... Why don't we do this? If she has anything that she needed to announce or say, she can just have it sent via email, I guess.
Okay.
I'm weighing whether or not somebody should run and just tap her on the shoulder real quick just to see if she has anything, so.
Sure.
By the time it takes to do that, we could be done, so. All right, we'll go ahead and move on to item number seven, miscellaneous business by call of planning commissioners. Anybody have any miscellaneous business? Any known absences coming up? Not hearing or seeing any.
June 10, I believe, June 10, I may have comp planned, so that's what that is.
Do you know when you would know for sure?
I can find out right now.
And I think we've already scheduled the other one for the Tuesday, the 28th, right? Because it's 27th, it's Memorial Day?
Oh, yes, yep. That's right.
So yeah, it looks like I will not be in attendance, but I will try to tell everybody who's in the state.
Okay. We'll play it by ear, and if you're not able to call in, we'll just grant an excused absence. Anybody else have any conflicts?
I just know for the next meeting, I'll be virtual.
Virtual, okay.
Yeah.
That's good to know. Thank you. All right, looks like we have the director in attendance, so we'll go ahead and back to circle to item number six again.
Thank you.
Director's Report.
I was just walking down here, sorry it was late. Did we also talk about that the next meeting's going to be on Tuesday due to Memorial Day?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, just wanted to make sure nobody shows up and is sorely disappointed because we're not meeting. I just wanted to reiterate, sub area, I'm sure you guys talked about it, sub area planning meeting for June 11th at Brighton School for Cascade View and Melody Hill. We'll be bringing you a development review update as well on your next meeting to go over all of the development that was finalized or submitted, you know, such things as subdivisions and plan developments and all of those things for this past year. So we'll be giving you an update on what that looked like and status of those projects, so that will be on your next agenda as well. And also, Sierra Construction reached out to the city. They're having a ribbon-cutting ceremony for tracks, which is Building 3 at Terrace Station on the 21st at 3:00 PM as well. So having a little gathering for what is the third and final building of the Terrace Station development. There could potentially be a fourth building. We did a pre-application conference, but what was under the original, there was a development agreement for those first three buildings that were planned, and the construction of Van Rye Boulevard and all of those things that went with that. This is kind of marking the end of that as we know it. We've processed a couple of tenant improvement applications for some commercial development on the ground floor as well, so we're starting to see some more movement of those commercial spaces being leased out, which is good news as well. So hopefully, Building 3 will be successful and get some more.
So that, those tenant improvements, that's just for the new Building 3, or is that for?
That was 2 as well, so there's a brewery going into Building 2 in one of the spaces as well. So starting to see some movement with some of those things that everybody's pretty excited about.
I know that there was a big space down there that the idea was it was going to be the gym relocating, but they kind of pulled out of that, so.
Yeah, yeah, well, 24-hour fitness, I mean, went bankrupt, so that kind of put the squash on that. I mean, all the infrastructure was in, it was designed specifically for that, interior swimming pool, the whole nine yards, and then...
I didn't realize there was a pool there too.
Oh, yeah, and then COVID hit, and, you know, it pretty much decimated a lot of the, those types of uses, right? I mean, depending on what type of business you were in at the time, those times were not kind to some, and that, and that whole franchise really took a hit as well during that time, so.
So that's now going to be a family, my understanding that's going to be one of those trampoline carts?
It is, yeah, so get your reservations now. I'm sure I'll see every one of you jumping on those trampolines, me included. I'll be in the party room drinking the punch with the kids.
I'm just kind of curious, what, I mean, are they just going to cover up the pool or are they going to?
Yeah, they've already covered up the pool.
Okay.
Okay, so that's already been, yeah. There's been, we've talked to several different potential tenants. They have a leasing, a retail leaser that works on... potential tenants, they have a leasing, a retail leasor that works on leasing those spaces and, yeah, they realized once that wasn't happening that things were going to get, you know, those spaces are meant to kind of morph depending on, you know, what's going to be in those buildings, but, yeah, they've moved on from, from that, so, yep.
Okay. Do we know if, you know, obviously a potential building four is, you know, maybe a ways off, do we happen to know would it be Sierra Construction as well or?
Sierra is who did the pre-app for, for that fourth building, so.
I only ask because you think they're familiar with.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So it would make, you know, it makes sense and maybe it would speed up some things.
They did a, a street vacation on 236 for a portion of that, that was kind of odd right there that, on that, that southeast corner, and so they got some additional property right there, it's kind of where that big hole is and that, and they've purchased some property next to that, that lot as well, so, I mean, they've slowly acqui- they're slowly acquiring the room to basically put a fourth building at some point in time.
So they don't actually have all the land yet that they would need?
Well, they do, but, you know, depending on kind of how it gets designed or what transpires.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then even, even if everything was green-lighted today, we're still, you know, it'd still be a couple of years before.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, you know, these things unfortunately take more time than you think as far as just getting everything in place and, and financing and design concept and then going through permitting and then just construction and, you know, as we know, these things don't happen overnight. Specifically, these big multi-story mixed use buildings, you know, they take some time to actually get going.
This, this may be looking a little further down than you can ask, but it would be sort of an embarrassment of riches if we had this problem, but if, if there was an issue between the redevelopment of the interim park and ride site, you know, just north of the station, you know, I'm assuming they're ready to go or, you know, very close to ready to go soon as Sound Transit vacates that whole area, they're, yeah, they're already gone, so I don't.
Yeah.
I don't know what date that, that would be, but say, there, you know, it's obviously going to take a long time for them to do their project, but once it starts, you're potentially looking at, you know, sidewalks being closed, I'm, I'm assuming the city would tell any building four development on the other side of the street, they may, would maybe have to hold off until, you know, the south side would have to wait until the north side.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we're going to have to keep the access open regardless, but they're mobbing on the interim parking lot right now, so they put up fencing last week, they're.
Oh, okay.
They're slicing and dicing right now, taking out the interim parking lot and their land use and civil applications, they're, they're, even their building permits are ready to be issued.
Mm-hmm.
They had some civil stuff to work out, and so that's going to start happening as soon as they get done getting the interim parking lot out of there and getting some temporary stormwater improvements and such in there, so we're going to see that go up this fall, so it's going to start.
I know that there was some concern by some planning commissioners about pedestrian access and how it was blocked off.
Yeah.
Previously in that area, so, I mean, I know different developers, you know, it's a slightly different location, but.
It's a constant battle, let's just say that, making sure we have accessibility, but it's.
Especially since the light rail station will be open and we might see a lot more people.
Yeah, regardless, regardless, you have to have access, period, and so that's just how it is, you got to keep it open.
Okay.
So we will continue to try to make sure that it is open, so all, all of our eyes are on it.
So that's all that's happening there, they're just making it a, it's still going to be a parking structure and they're just revamping it and making it?
No, they're, they're doing two buildings there, it's really one building, considered one building with two spires, seven stories, commercial on the bottom.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's an actual development there, but they have to get those, that parking lot which was considered temporary.
Right.
Off of that space in order to proceed with development.
Okay.
Yeah. So you'll see it kind of tore down to be reconstructed. Yeah, so it's going to look a lot different, and then we'll start seeing the plaza get put in place, the pedestrian plaza and some other things, so in a couple of years, that entry into Mount Lake Terrace will look very different than it does today, which will be really interesting to see that all kind of come together. Yeah, I don't know, were you at the groundbreaking for Terrace Station at all, Nick, back in the day?
No, I generally shy away.
Yeah.
Those type of events.
Well, I remember sitting on a big dirt mound out there and, and, you know, just to see it, the three buildings constructed and the new street and, you know, it's kind of, to see it all come together in the station and everything, it's just going to be very different than, than what it has been, so, yeah.
Like, I think, you know, especially with the, the ground floor tenants down in the Terrace Station, you know, it's, businesses attract more businesses.
Right, yep.
It's kind of the domino effect and it's sort of the same with, with development as well, so this, you know, outside of Terrace Station, this next development is going to be the most visible.
Yeah, right next to the light rail, and, you know, just getting the light rail station fully operational, getting more tenants in those buildings, you know, they're going to be, hey, what's close, you know, and so it's going to help, it's going to help town center as a whole and that whole area, right? So, yep, little by little, chip away at it and it will help everybody.
Sort of speaking of the town center, then we, I mean, there is a second interim parking site, what's the status with that then?
We're under a land use review right now, I think we're pretty close to giving approval of that site as well.
Okay, it's, I, I remember how much time we spent on making sure it was on the books that these lots could not be permanent and they.
Yeah.
Be redeveloped, so I'm glad to see that that is actually happening and.
Yes.
Our worst fears aren't sort of coming true that, you know, we're stuck with a parking lot.
It's a big concrete parking lot, nothing gets developed there, yeah, which, you know, definitely is, was the whole idea, that they're just not going to sit there.
Are we talking about the Rogers?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I have a feeling, again, with that location, that will maybe be the catalyst for.
Yeah, I, I saw them surveying over at the old bank building today, and I've, we've been approached a couple of times on that property as well, so I think we're going to start seeing some movement on that as well and some other stuff that's going on.
Have there been, because I know the zoning is a little bit different on, you know, on the bank lot, has there been inquiries on the potential to upzone that or the, the adjacent parcels to?
No, I think people are okay with the zoning on that, I think it's just putting the pencil down and doing the numbers, because it's the bank lot and the adjacent, the adjacent property. As much as they want for the property, I think it would be difficult just to keep the, the building there as is, that's going to get demoed, I would imagine, I'd be surprised if it doesn't get demoed for more intense use of across the street.
Do you know if the, the bank actually owns that property, I know a lot of times banks actually own.
I believe they do, yeah.
Sometimes I can hold up things because banks are big organizations.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
They have no problem just ignoring a piece of property.
Yeah.
For, for a long time, so.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure they could hold it, you know, longer, but I mean, we're seeing that with other properties too, depending, and I think if we start to see the feds move on the interest rate, then I think we're going to see some more movement. We certainly have been a lot busier than the last part of last year anyways, and last year probably as a whole, people are starting to see some movement in the market, so that means that we start to get busier.
Okay.
At least from the development side, yeah.
All right. Anybody else have any questions? Not hearing or seeing any, and we already did our miscellaneous business, so I guess we can go ahead and declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Recording stopped.